Good evening. Today is Monday, March 9th, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education meeting, and I'm calling it to order. Before we get started, I would like to introduce to you our SRO for the night, Alicia Mason, who is our Hickory Ridge Middle School SRO. And I can't say enough about what all of our SROs do for our district and how they protect our students. So I just want you all to take time to acknowledge her presence as you go about your activities tonight. And thank you very much, Alicia, for what you do for us. Before we get started, we're going to have the presentation of the colors. Dr. Kirk will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And then we will have the National Anthem, and I will introduce all of these young men and women after we do the presentation of the colors and our introduction. So join me as we wait for our color guard, and everyone come to a stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. Hoofs.
here presenting to us. Our color guard was the Mount Pleasant High School Air Force ROTC cadets, and their members include Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Hunter Moore, Commander. And I have a change. Haven't gotten there yet, though. Cadet Captain Matthew Cavenas, Cadet Captain Mary Beth Lewis, Staff Sergeant Dee Whitaker. And the cadets are instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell, U.S. Air Force retired, and Chief Kevin McLaughlin, U.S. Air Force retired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our National Anthem tonight was performed by our J.M. Robinson High School brass ensemble, and they included Hyatt Hames, Leo Martinez, Elizabeth Bruce, Israel Zanday, Dakota Stevens, and Tyler Martinez. This happens to mark the 200th anniversary of the National Anthem. It was written in Baltimore, if you remember, and I happened to visit that this year, and what a moving place that is when you get to think of what Francis Scott Key was up against when he wrote that, and he was on a British ship watching. So thank you again for presenting that to us tonight. And most importantly, Mr. Blair Smith was their director, and he did a wonderful job for them. Sorry, Blair, I forgot to mention you. All right, board members, it's time to set the agenda, but before I take a motion to set the agenda, I have several, I have a change that I would like to make. I'd like to switch 4 dot 1 and 4 dot 2 so that 4 dot 2 comes first. That is the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Year, or Teacher of the Month Award. We have that first, and then we'll-
Do you need a motion for that?
Well, I'm going to lump it all together here. And then there's another motion, put that all together into a 50-50 grant for Northwest Cabarrus High School. I'll need a second on that motion. I'd like to make a motion that we have a discussion on the 50-50 grant for Northwest Cabarrus High School.
Second.
So Dr. Phillips makes the second on that.
So that'll be 9.6.
And that will be 9.6 in our agenda. Thank you, Dr. Phillips. All right. Any discussion? All in favor of the changes to the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? All right. So the agenda has been changed, and we're now moving forward with the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award. Mr. Tim Vaughn, Dr. Barry Shepherd, and Ms. Glenda Jones, please come on to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Tonight, we are privileged to celebrate another one of our excellent teachers thanks to the generosity of Hillbush Ford. Mr. Vaughn, we want to thank you and Hillbush Ford for your continued commitment to Cabarrus County Schools and to helping us honor a few of our outstanding teachers. The Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March is Meredith Powers. Mrs. Powers, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward?
Meredith Powers is a sixth-grade math and social studies teacher at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. She was nominated for this month's award by a parent who wrote, "Mrs. Powers consistently demonstrates concern and interest in my child's education. She is an enthusiastic and energetic teacher. I appreciate her commitment to holding my child accountable for his learning. She has been flexible and accommodating, and when needed, firm, and sticks to her principles based on the situation. She arrives early each day and is willing to meet with students who need extra help. I appreciate her prompt communication and her support of parent involvement. She is an excellent teacher." Mrs. Powers, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, we thank you for your energy and your enthusiasm and your overall commitment to our students. Please allow Dr. Shepherd and Mr. Vaughn to present you with your awards.
All right, now we'll move back to 4 point 1, which is our Impact Through Education Awards. Ms. Ronnie Boone will come down, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, audience members, and to our viewing audience at home. Tonight, for our Impact Through Education Awards, we will recognize students and staff members at Concord High School and also at W.R. Odell Elementary School. Before we begin, I want to say thank you to our friends at Concord Printing for once again this year sponsoring the Impact Through Education Awards so that we are able to share this time with our students and staff members and honor them. So now we'll begin with our students and staff members from Concord High. I'd like to invite any members of the Concord High School administrative team to please come forward to stand with their students and staff at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, audience members, and to our viewing audience at home. Tonight, for our Impact Through Education Awards, we will recognize students and staff members at Concord High School and also at W.R. Odell Elementary School. Before we begin, I want to say thank you to our friends at Concord Printing for once again this year sponsoring the Impact Through Education Awards so that we are able to share this time with our students and staff members and honor them. So now we'll begin with our students and staff members from Concord High. I'd like to invite any members of the Concord High School administrative team to please come forward to stand with their students and staff at this time. Our first honoree from Concord High School is Alexandra Ruland. I could tell you that Alex is a senior at Concord High School who made the A Honor Roll last semester, has a 3.5 GPA, and has always taken honors-level courses. I could also tell you that his teacher's comment that he is respectful, his attitude is commendable, or that he is an outstanding cadet and leader, but all of this pales in comparison to what Alex does every day before he begins his day as a student. Each day, Alex attends to the needs of his grandmother, who is battling cancer at an advanced stage. He is sometimes up every hour during the night, making sure she is resting comfortably. He does this while maintaining As and Bs and holding down a career and technical education internship with the Cabarrus County Public Relations Department. This makes Alex an unsung hero in many books, but that isn't all that makes Alex worthy of this honor. During his time at Concord High, Alex has been a two-year member and officer of DECA, co-chief of the Emergency Medical Technician Class, a two-year member of the National Technical Honor Society, rugby club team member for four years, and yearbook member, providing graphic design layouts for the nationally recognized web yearbook at Concord High School. Alex has participated in the Public Safety Program at Concord High and is eligible to take the EMT Basic Exam and earn certification as an Emergency Medical Technician in North Carolina. In all, Alex has completed 13 career development, career and technical education courses, including a CTE internship with the Cabarrus County Public Relations Department. This internship introduced me to new career opportunities which I never knew existed. "I got to star in a Cabarrus This Week segment by wearing a GoPro camera while driving the go-karts at Concord Mills," and "work on a public relations campaign for EMS Week," Alex said of his experience at the county's office. Alex is a student who embodies resilience, compassion, and courage. Alex's intern supervisor, Kasha Thompson, said, "Much to Alex's surprise, his internship was not about getting coffee orders right. We placed performance expectations on him. Draft after draft, he came back and gave more of himself. Because of programs at his school, Alex was invested and passionate about career opportunities. He had real-life experience in emergency response, and those fundamentals gave him a significant advantage. He had opinions and understanding of a trade, which gave him the ability to analytically review scenarios and articulate ideas. He recognized a need and backed up his academic foundations, was able to develop tools that he can now use in his portfolio." Alex's career development coordinator says, "Alex is a great ambassador for the Career and Technical Education Department. He has worked hard in taking drafting, EMT, and business classes, and has completed three career clusters. Alex makes my job fun. He has a big heart and a love for chocolate and always brightens my day." Congratulations, Alex, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Concord High School. Our next honoree from Concord High School is Sasha Whitley. Would Sasha and her family please come forward? Sasha is a senior at Concord High School. She moved to North Carolina in middle school from the Raleigh area. Unsure of what the future would hold, Sasha held strong to the ideals that her mother, who in Sasha's words, "inspires her the most," taught her and her younger siblings. Sasha's academic ability and strong work ethic were quickly noticed, and Sasha was asked to take a new honors offering called Cultures and Civilizations. This course is now a part of the middle year's IB Civilizations course, the middle year's IB course offering, and at the time it started, Sasha was afraid she would not only be one of the few minorities in the class, but that she would struggle with the rigor and high expectations that came along with the course. Since then, Sasha has taken all honors and advanced placement courses, and currently holds a 4.2 GPA and is ranked 16th in her senior class. Sasha has represented Concord High in many other ways. She currently serves as the president of the CHS Model United Nations, vice president of the school's chapter for the National Honor Society. She participates in yearbook, HOSA, theater, and helps publish OPUS, the school's literary magazine. Even more impressive is that last spring, she was recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program for her outstanding performance on the PSAT. This year, all of Spyder Nation celebrated upon learning that Sasha had earned a full scholarship to attend Vanderbilt University. She plans to enroll this fall and study broadcast journalism. Outstanding character, a leader among leaders, and an all-around fine young lady, we are proud to present Sasha Whitley with the Impact Through Education Award for Concord High. Would Ms. Deal and her family please come forward? Marie Deal has been teaching sociology, U.S. history, and IB history of the Americas in the Social Studies Department and serving the students of Concord High School for 10 years. She is a dedicated servant leader who has mentored new teachers and students at Concord High. She has led her department and her profession overall through her involvement in several Concord High School projects and programs. Mrs. Deal is the advisor for the school's Interact Club and co-advisor for the National Honor Society. She leads the clubs in various public service projects in our community. She is also a leader within Concord High's Literacy Leadership Initiative and is also a member of the First Cohort for Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Leaders Program. Mrs. Deal also was selected as a Teacher of the Year finalist in 2010 for the district. This is an honor her students can attest to, and here are a few comments that they shared about her. "Mrs. Deal is one of the best teachers I've ever had. She incorporates technology into everything. She's supportive when kids make comments or decisions in class that are off the mark by helping guide them to where they need to be. She encourages them back up with their opinions and beliefs." Another said, "She's a great listener. She really takes into account what her students have to say. She values us as people." "Mrs. Deal has set a high standard and is well-regarded within Spyder Nation and in the community as one of the best teachers around. We are very proud to honor her with an Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations." And Mr. Russ is not here because he is coaching a game this evening, so I will go ahead and read his bio, and then I'll present his award to Mrs. Black, and she'll make sure that he gets it. Coach Russ serves as an exceptional children's teacher assistant and head baseball coach at Concord High School. He's also an assistant football coach. In the classroom, he is a strong advocate for all students in his classroom. He works hard to reach all of their needs and establishes great relationships with each of them. As head baseball coach, he instills a winning attitude in all of his athletes. He has taken a program that struggled to be competitive to one that is in every game and continues to make strides on a yearly basis. Coach Russ's players love playing for him and compete hard on a daily basis. Coach Russ is one of those individuals that you want young kids to have the opportunity to meet and work with. He brings a positive outlook to school each day. His impact on Concord High School, the students, and the community are evident inside the school and on the field. Congratulations, Coach Russ, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. Now we'll move on to honoring our students and staff at Odell Elementary School, and I'd like to invite any members of the Odell Elementary Administrative Team to come forward Our first honoree from Odell Elementary is Nicholas Eisenhardt. Would Nick and his family please come forward? Nick is a fifth grader at Odell Elementary School. He's one of those kids teachers continuously say they love to have in their classrooms. He is a hard worker and always tries to be fair and kind to everyone. Nick is an avid reader who consumes at least one to two books each week. He enjoys books about Greek and Roman gods and mythology the most. His love for reading extended into one of his favorite Odell activities as a reading buddy to younger students in the school. Nick is passionate about preventing school bullying, and in the past has performed research on anti-bullying activities. He is currently enjoying a stint on the school's safety patrol. When he's not in school, Nick loves playing video games and all things electronic, but he also is extremely dedicated to athletics. He currently plays the top-level U-11 soccer for the Lake Norman Soccer Club on the HV Highlanders team, which is ranked 19th in the state. Nick is also currently having a great time two nights a week working on gymnastic skills and will be looking to join a competitive team in the fall on a trampoline and possibly floor exercises. In the rare moments when he's not reading or playing a sport, Nick loves to be outside in nature, hiking or camping or swimming or skateboarding or just hanging out with his friends. Congratulations, Nick, on working hard and on being recognized as an Impact Through Education Award winner. Morgan is a fifth-grade student at W.R. Odell Elementary School. Her teachers describe her as a caring, hard-working, model student. For the past nine years, nine and a half years, Morgan has participated in dancing. She enjoys tap, jazz, hip-hop, lyrical, ballet, and musical theater. She thoroughly enjoys being on her competition dance team. This year, Morgan has dedicated her passion for education to her Make-A-Wish Make-A-Difference Project. Sorry, I'm getting my charities mixed up here. Morgan has tutored her neighbor every Friday for the past four months, and as a result, her neighbor's grades have improved, landing her on the A Honor Roll this past nine weeks. She has also been dedicated to assisting Mrs. Barber, a second-grade teacher at Odell, every morning before school begins. Morgan also plans to volunteer at a local daycare center, reading to children and doing arts and crafts. Morgan's passion for education began at a very young age. She began mimicking her teachers and going to the Dollar Store and Education Express to buy her classroom supplies. Eventually, her playroom was a fully functioning classroom. While Morgan realizes that there are many different challenges in our community, she holds steadfast to the fact that education is the key to getting past many of these challenges. Her ultimate goal is to become the U.S. Secretary of Education one day. Morgan also has a passion for military families. She has also committed her time to collecting items for the Fisher House located in Fort Bragg, North Carolina, Fort Bragg and Fayetteville, North Carolina. Congratulations, Morgan, on being selected at Impact Through Education Award winner for Odell Elementary School.
I am Morgan's paternal grandmother.
I am Morgan's paternal grandmother. I am Fanny Leonard Simmons from Mullins, South Carolina. And I wrote these few words just for her. Like a shining star you are, leading and going far, showing excellence and superiority in all you say and do, using well the gifts and talents that God has given you, being the best that you can be by doing the best that you can with what you have. Use your God-given ability to shine for such a time as this. Shine, Morgan, shine in every alphabet that you write. Shine for the master of this land. Shine, Morgan, shine.
Shake the board members' hands, please. Our next Odell honoree is Mrs. Catherine Moore. Would Ms. Moore and her family please come forward? Catherine Moore is a guidance counselor at Odell Elementary School. She's worked at Odell for 23 years. She's worked in education for 33 years and has been with Cabarrus County Schools for 31 years. She began the very first counseling programs at Royal Oaks and R. Brown McAllister Elementary Schools. Ms. Moore is described by her principal as being a counselor who is a child advocate and who reaches out to community resources when needed to make sure all students have what they need to be successful, whether it's a physical need, an academic need, or an emotional need. Catherine always jumps in and helps wherever she is needed, getting crying kindergarteners to class, running the bus lot every afternoon, or serving as one of Odell's teacher representatives on the superintendent's teacher advisory board. Her dedication to the students and staff at Odell is outstanding, and she's certainly a valued member of the Odell family. Congratulations, Mrs. Moore, on being selected as an Impact Through Education Award winner. And our final honoree from Odell Elementary this evening is Mr. Delbert Elwood. Would Mr. Elwood and his family please come forward? Delbert Elwood is the head custodian at WR Odell Elementary School. He has worked at Odell for three years. He always goes above and beyond to get the job done, is hard-working, and dependable. Staff members say, "Delbert always stops to help in any way he can. He's always smiling and willing to help out." Mr. Elwood, thank you for all that you do for the students and staff at Odell Elementary School, and congratulations on receiving the Impact Through Education Award.
All right, we've come to the Young Authors State Winners, Dr. Cheryl Mylum and Dr. Tara Natchez. Well, maybe just Dr. Mylum will be presenting.
I'll be presenting all the awards tonight.
And this is a very special award because my daughter has actually participated in Young Authors. They didn't quite make the state level, but I know it was a really blessing for them, so take it away, please.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. The Young Authors Project is sponsored by the North Carolina Reading Association and the Greater Cabarrus Reading Association. Students are encouraged to participate in the competition, and this year's theme was Dare to Dream. Writers were encouraged to write about their own dreams or about how they have been inspired by the dreams of others. The authors could write prose or poetry, fiction or nonfiction, and the winners tonight will also be honored at a celebration at the Raleigh Convention Center on March 14. And now for the winners. I'll call all of the elementary students up first, and if they will just form a line across the front, right in front of all the board members, then we'll get a picture of them. Then we'll call all the middle school winners up. We'll begin with Beverly Hills. For the writing Change the World, Desmond Monte, please come up. Also from Beverly Hills, A Dream for Peace, Madison Davis. Also from Beverly Hills, Dream Big, Ava Rackoff. And from Bogart Elementary, Questions for God, Elizabeth Hinson. From Bogart Elementary, Out of This World Creatures, Payden Ranieri. From Bogart Elementary, Dance Dream, Aubrey Holt. From Bogart Elementary, What Do You Want to Be, Campbell Depkin. And from Carl Farr Elementary, a student who is ill and unable to be with us tonight, her work was My Place, Ally Wright. From Cox Mill Elementary, My Future, Nikita Desai. Cox Mill Elementary, What Are Your Dreams, Alexandra Cheng. From Harrisburg Elementary, Being in the NBA, Sean Nix. From Harrisburg Elementary, Campbell's Cafe, Campbell Poplar. From Harrisburg Elementary, Life is a Dream, Alyssa Bissonette. From Mount Pleasant Elementary, A Dancing Dream, Grayson Almond. From Odell Elementary, What I Want to Be When I Grow Up, Ashvi Shah. From Odell Elementary, My Dream Vacation, Destiny Lowery. From Odell Elementary, Time-Travelling Dreamer, Morgan Simmons. From Pitts School Elementary, New York Dreams, Madison Blackwelder. From Pitts Elementary, Me on America's Got Talent, Bryce Hubry. From R. Brown McAllister Elementary, The Dream of Gene Verbal, Kaya S. Hartzell. From R. Brown McAllister, A Glimpse of the Future, Grant Martin. From Rocky River Elementary, A Happy Heart, My True Story, Jada Brooks. From Rocky River Elementary, The World of My Dreams, Carrie Schumate. From Rocky River Elementary, The Puppy That Dared to Dream, Jenna Benton. From Royal Oaks Elementary, Dare to Dream, Avery Brooke Warren. From Weddington Hills Elementary, The Dreamer, Colin Seitz. Let's congratulate all of our elementary school winners. Mike, this is so cool.
English majors, English majors, English majors, English majors.
And one more round of applause. You can all be seated. Next, I'll call up the middle school winners, and if they'll line up as the elementary students did. From C.C. Griffin Middle School, for her work, Nina McKenzie Hansen. From J.N. Freeze, Setting Sail, Riley Holbert. From J.N. Freeze, If Dreamers Didn't Dream, Chloe Bell. From J.N. Freeze, Bad Dreams, Charlotte Alcon. From J.N. Freeze, A World Where, Simone McFarlane. From Northwest Cabarrus Middle, Dream to Fly, Emily Mitchell. From Northwest Cabarrus Middle, Dream of a Family, Kristin Meisenheimer. And from Winkler Middle School, The Burning Dream, Madison Kirkman. Also from Winkler, A Dream for Me and a Dream for Others, Quinlan Marchesi. Winkler Middle School, My Words or My Dream, Kyle Ingram. And that concludes our middle school winners. Congratulations. We have one more winner in the Forever Young category. These are for our adult entries, and we have one winner from Weddington Hills Elementary, Dare to Dream, Lynette Linderman. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let us... Dr. Van Huclem, if you could come to the podium, please, and he'll be presenting the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Demonstration Program. This is a recognition.
Correct, and at this time I'd like to invite Amy Harding and Trina Wetzel to the front. Tonight, we're celebrating the work of Amy Harding, a teacher at Mary Frances Wall Center. Just read some quick things about Amy. This is from the North Carolina Department of Instruction, the letter that we received regarding her classroom. Says, "I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your continued support of the North Carolina Demonstration Program by recognizing the work in your district at Mary Frances Wall Center. Amy Harding is the teacher leader who continues to be committed to serve as a North Carolina Demonstration Program teacher. This program is a priority of the DPI's Office of Early Learning. These pre-kindergarten and kindergarten teachers lead by modeling, sharing, promoting, and articulating effective learning environments, curriculum, and instructional practices to ensure optimal learning and development for all children." Ms. Wetzel writes this about Ms. Harding. "Amy has been teaching early childhood special education for 18 years. Amy has taught in an inclusive early childhood classroom for eight years. She thrives on supporting children to grow in their knowledge and emotional competence. Her classroom may be learning about monarch butterflies, US males, space, or cardinals. You never know. She's an expert at recognizing children's needs and interests and building instruction to support their growth. Thank you, Amy, for all your hard work. We're really proud of you."
Members of the board, I want to present to you the 2014-15 Business and Nonprofit Honor Roll. And the first group I would like to recognize is the Cannon Foundation. So, we will recognize the Cannon Foundation for all the wonderful things that they've done for our district. They've supported our STEM program, and they've helped us in a number of other ways to help enable our students to become better and better. I'd like to recognize the Golden Leaf Foundation. Is there someone here?
Yes.
Mark Sorles. Mr. Sorles, from the Golden Leaf Foundation. Do you want us to stand right here?
That'd be really cool if you stood up. Thank you very much. Perfect.
Thank you, Van, for coming tonight. I'd like to also recognize the Burroughs Welcome Fund. Is there a representative from the Burroughs Fund here tonight? Well, let's give them an applause as well. Thank you. Our board members, we've moved to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, three sets of minutes, the February 2nd minutes, so I'll take a motion if there are no corrections to that.
Second.
All right, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's go to the February 9th minutes. Are there any improvements or changes to those? I'll take a motion. David Harrison.
Second.
Rob seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now the February 19th minutes. Are there any changes to those? Carolyn Carpenter and Jeff Phillips. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Board Chair's comments is our next section. Well, we've come out of winter, it looks like. We had a beautiful weekend, and we're hoping that we won't have any March surprises. March rolled in almost like a lion, but it's going to go out like a little lamb, like we were taught in kindergarten. We've just completed our fifth year of a budget process where we invited members from the community, from the county, from throughout the district to participate in the budgeting process. And after four different days through January, February, and March, the budget- And after four different days through January, February, and March, the Budget Committee has developed a budget that the Board of Education will be considering later on, starting on March 19th of this month. First of all, I would like to thank all who participated. We had not only our own folks, not only from the central office, but we had teachers from different schools throughout the district. We also had administrators from the county. We had a couple of our county commissioners attend several different sessions. And we had volunteers that literally left their job and came and volunteered and spent time doing this. And it really means a lot when we can get all the different viewpoints that we are able to get through that budget process, and I believe it went really well this year. Contained within the Budget Committee's recommendation for the Board of Education to consider is a request to increase local pay supplements of both certified educators, that is, and non-certified, those who are paid hourly rates. So that is, again, in our budget this year. We hope that the commissioners can find room in their budget to help us along with that request. The requests that we have for increases into the supplement are based on a 2012 salary survey that was performed by the Board right before the four of us came on. Actually, Mr. Furr and Ms. Carolyn Carpenter were part of the Board at the time that that was done, and we're still trying to work to make that one whole. We also reviewed a number of capital needs. Included in those capital needs are facility repairs, technology funding, transportation and vehicle needs, even drivers ed vehicles were discussed, and also the funding for two new schools, the Mount Pleasant Middle School and the Royal Oaks Elementary School that are currently on our to-do list. And as I said, the Board will begin March 19th on deliberating on this budget, and anyone who wishes to come and hear, we're more than welcome to be coming out here. We invite you to come here and support us as we go through this budget process. So with that, I will turn this over to Dr. Shepherd.
Thank you very much. Tonight is a most difficult night, yet very exciting night for me as an educator with the public schools of North Carolina and as your superintendent. I want to thank my wife, Laura, and my daughters, Fran and Parker, who have joined us in the back of the room there and have joined me tonight as I announce my retirement from North Carolina Public Educational Service. In December of 2007, we traveled here as a family, and we introduced our daughters to their new home. We brought them here the day before the December 7th announcement. We took them shopping. We took them to dinner. We told them they were moving to Concord to get all their tears out of the way before the next day, when they sat right here behind me. And they, on that day... I've lost my place. Let me see. All right. And at that time, the girls were still in elementary school, I think fourth and fifth grade, but my family did sit behind me then, as Liz Poole announced that the Board of Education had selected me as their superintendent. It was a tremendous day in my life, in our family's life. Over the past seven and a half years, I've tried to properly balance family life with work, and Laura, my wife and best friend, has worked tirelessly to make sure that I remained an active part of our daughter's life. Thank you, Laura, and I love you for it. I look forward to spending more time with my family over the next few years, but tonight I stand firmly on the shoulders of many wonderful leaders who have served as superintendent of the Cabarrus County Schools. None of them has done it alone, and I am no exception. I would first like to thank the various board members that I've worked with through the years, who have given me the opportunity to serve this school district as superintendent. I also thank the thousands of community friends and Cabarrus County school families who have shown support for me as we've worked to make CCS the clear choice for the community, for our children. Next, I thank our principals, teachers, and thousands of staff members who have successfully carried out our shared vision, which is to value, teach, and empower each student in a culture of educational excellence. I thank my cabinet, who in not only my opinion, but that of educational leaders across our region are the very best at what you do. You've accomplished great things, and I look forward to watching you continue to prosper. And last but not least, I thank Jeanette Trexler, Mason Miller, and Robert Kirk. That's my wife applauding right there. My partners in carrying out this difficult and rewarding work throughout my tenure here. Robert, I can't tell you how much I love you and appreciate you, and I'm going to miss you greatly. Though my work in North Carolina is over, I look forward to pursuing other opportunities for educational leadership elsewhere. Immediately and over the spring and summer, I will serve as the Executive Director of Music City Youth and the Arts, the Nashville, Tennessee-based parent company of Music City Drum and Buhle Corps. I met with the Board earlier tonight, shared this information with them. We've agreed that my last day as superintendent will be March 31st. Help me, Sarah, make sure I get this right. I will then serve as a consultant to the district through April... No. Is that right, through April 1st?
30th.
30th. I wrote first. April 30th. That's right. That's right. All right. And one day, I'll do that. April 30th. And then I will officially retire on May 1st. I've enjoyed working with each and every one of you, and I just ask that God bless you all as you continue your work. Thank you, and I love you.
Board members, I think it would be appropriate if we just took a quick five-minute break. So if we could, take a five-minute break so that Dr. Shepherd can get the emotion out of this moment and enjoy that, and then we'll come back together, and we'll start with our agenda for guest speakers.